To order the Emory Unified School District. Can we have a roll call, please?
Let me start over. Member Collins Rogers?
Here.
Member Marion?
Here.
Member Pats?
Here.
President Affeld?
Here. Okay, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Do we have any changes to the agenda?
Good evening, no changes, thank you.
Okay. Mr. Pats?
Yeah, I have a concern about the negotiations again. I do feel like we've gotten... Yeah, I do feel like we've gotten closer to what we need to do, but... And we pull this up here. My understanding is that you're supposed to talk about it in open session first before you move into closed session, and I didn't see that on the agenda.
My understanding from our attorney, we did ask that question specifically, is that we have it spelled out in the language of a closed session, so that there... That is alerting as an informational piece of what we're doing and that we're refined the way that is.
And I get that. I guess my question is, why don't we want to have a public conversation about what we want to do with the site first? I think several parents have expressed to me that that was mentioned at a PTO meeting by President Affeld, and I know he personally told me that we would have a public discussion about the future of that site. And now it's two meetings in a row where we're planning to lease it out before we really talked about what the options are. And I take a moment when I see Yu Ming as a potential lesee. You know, Yu Ming is a private school that gets public funds and was founded by Josh Simon's boss at Abaldacy. And I really would like to stay as far away from Abaldacy in closed-session meetings as I can. They're, you know, in the news lately with their development in Oakland and, you know, resegregating the East Bay one port door at a time. And I think it'd be a real shame for our district to get involved in that kind of business, although I suspect, given that Josh has approached me about this idea well over a year ago, that that has been his plan and impetus for getting students out of NE8. And so I would love to have a public meeting, and so I'd love to amend the agenda, put this off, and direct the superintendent to have a public meeting at our next scheduled board meeting to talk about the future of the NE8 site.
Okay, appreciate that comment. We have been having a public discussion. There have been study sessions, and we had a session just on Saturday, the 12th, that invited people to discuss that, and I've been talking to parents and been to PTO meetings. So, the conversation is ongoing. There's an if and when. Any specific action is proposed with respect to the NE8 site, that will certainly be discussed in public. As far as the limited conversation tonight about a conference identifying negotiators, it's our understanding that the notice fully complies with the Brown Act. So, I didn't hear you make a motion, but if you are, I would, you know, urge against it.
Well, you know, I'd love to get people on the record of why we need secret meetings before we have a public discussion. So, I will also move that we amend the agenda to pull this item off. Or... And so I will look for a second.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I would second it, just in terms of everybody trying to have a full input. I know that when we did have the meeting on the 12th, there wasn't too much discussion about the grounds that NE8 would be leased upon. So, it would be nice to have, you know... It would be nice to have the full discussion with community members, parents, teachers, staff, faculty, in regards to what will be going on with the NE8 facility in the future. So, I do second the motion.
Okay, the motion's been seconded. Any public comment on the motion?
Is there any way that this can be turned off? It's so loud that we can't hear from the audience. Before you start the clock, is there any way that can be turned down so it's not so loud?
That's heat.
What is it?
I'm sorry, Ms. Donahue, I don't believe so.
Okay, so what we're... What we are... Has been revealed here tonight is that a reneging of a promise to the parents has been revealed here tonight, and that is, we were promised unequivocally for several years ago that if NE8 gets taken from us with this K-12 model for the ECCL, it's not going to go to a charter school. So, now we find out you're talking tonight to a charter school. So, that's a reneging. And charter schools are extraordinarily dangerous and detrimental to public schools. As everybody knows, charter schools, they don't have to take all comers. And what they do is they take the best and the brightest, and then they'll leave the public schools with what's left. And so, it's really damaging to the public schools. And for this district to be talking to a charter school after promising us that you wouldn't do that is really beyond the pale. As Mr. Marion said, when he was revealed to engage in a Brown Act violation, he said he was speechless. So, I'm sort of... I'm not going to say I'm speechless, but I am outraged. So, Yu Ming Charter School, they get public money, as Mr. Pats just said, and yet it's a default private school. You have to speak fluent... You have to be fluent in Mandarin to get into this school. Who does this district serve? Not Mandarin speakers generally, serves African-Americans mostly, other children of color, disadvantaged, a lot of disadvantaged children, not Mandarin speakers. And yet, that's who we're going to be serving now. So, it's going to be come at the expense of African-American children. And I just heard Mr. Pats use the word "resegregation," and I do appreciate that. That is essentially what's going on here. And, you know, this is outrageous, and this... We should not be using... This school site, NE8's school site, it's been a public school for over 100 years. It's our school. We, the people of the City of Emoryville, own this school. And now we're talking about getting rid of it and having it become essentially a little private... Public funds going to this private concern that's going to damage the ECCL. And after all the time and money...
We're out of time.
...we've put into ECCL, for you guys to be entertaining this is just outrageous.
Any more public comment on this item? Okay, seeing none. Discussion on the motion to amend the agenda. Yeah, I would, as I said, not going to support the motion and the... I do support having a public discussion about what we're going to do with NE8. That's why I agreed to put the issue on the agenda a year ago and why I agreed to have study sessions describing it. That's why we had a community session this Saturday. And before we finally decide what we're doing next year with NE8, we will certainly have a public agenda item and have an open and full discussion about that. The purpose of putting an item on a closed session around real estate is a special purpose that the Brown Act and the Ed Code recognize are necessary to discuss in private closed session so that the district doesn't lose any advantage by discussing commercial terms or ideas in public that are recorded that other people and, you know, competitors can see. So, that's merely the purpose for an initial discussion. It's completely appropriate, and the rule of thumb in real estate negotiations being... Taking place in closed sessions. So, I appreciate your sentiment, Ms. Collins-Brown's, and, you know, I think it's one that we will definitely honor by having an open discussion about what we're going to do with NE8. But the specifics about what we want to do with... In a potential negotiation... Because there have been no negotiations to date, let me be clear about that. In a potential negotiation is a proper... Properly done in a closed session. So, any other discussion on this motion?
I think it's that potential that gives me pause. I think we all understand how negotiations work and why you would want closed-session things, but I appreciate you schooling the board on that. That said, I think we're putting the cart before the horse. We're not ready to negotiate if we don't have a plan. And to give directions on how to negotiate before you have a plan with community input is what we're objecting to. It's what I objected to two weeks ago, and it's what I'm objecting to now. It's, you know, we're going to set price and parameters, but we're not going to lease it, is kind of an odd way of doing business. When we're ready to lease it out, because I know that is your plan, and I know that is Josh Simon's plan, and has been for a while, and that's what happens in this district, but we should at least let the public have some input and let them say, hey, you know, we want to be able to continue to use this site on the weekends. We want to be able to do things, or maybe it's better to rent out something else. So, I don't know why the rush to negotiate if we're so far down the road on what that is. I think the price has already been set. It's somewhere between $300,000 to $600,000. If I remember the study session, talking about the ECCL and not talking about NE8, but... So, I don't know what it is we need to go into closed session for to discuss if we're not talking about actually negotiating a deal. And I said that last time. So, we're only negotiating against ourselves.
Any other discussion?
I just want to add something to this conversation. Having to do with... I just pulled this up. It's having to do with the California Department of Education Parameters of Closing a School Best Practice Guide. And it gives you basically the guidelines of how to proceed with addressing school properties, whether they're being utilized or not. So, I think if we were to go back to... And all it is is a guideline, but it is a roadmap on how to address Christian... Mr. Pats's proposal as far as what the process is as far as addressing our property. I just wanted to bring that up as far as another source of resource or another resource to look at.
So, would it be possible, just to throw this out there, where we could have the discussion with the community, city schools, everybody in collaboration to kind of get an opinion of, you know, what others would like to see happen with the facility? Neighbors, friends, families, so be it. And then enter into a closed session in terms of the final phase of the property for the NE8 Elementary School?
You know, it's my understanding that we need to track it because we're getting late in the year. And if there's, you know, any hope of outside revenue with respect to the NE8 campus, whether that's entirely or partially leased or any part of it, we need to get that ball rolling now, we're late in the year. And so, that's why I say I think we're just in a situation where we need to track it and get that ball rolling, and we will... We haven't, you know, had a... Yeah, well, you know, I think in April, at one of our April meetings, we need to review what the concerns are that have been raised over the last year and previously with respect to the NE8 campus and moving everyone over. Ideas for maintaining it there and make a decision on that Fisher-Cut Bay. But that's too late to then say, okay, now let's go out and, you know, explore other options. So, I think we need to be doing both, getting ready for that meeting and making sure we're keeping our options open so that we have, you know, courses of action still available to us. And that's all the closed session is about tonight, is to authorize Dr. Rubio to explore options.
I was just going to add, if I may, that we may have multiple... Ms. Rogers, to respond to your question, we may have multiple closed sessions of conversation over a period of time. So, I just wanted to let you know that I didn't want you to think about tonight's closed session as the only closed session that we're going to have on this topic. I think Mr. Affeld... President Affeld is correct. It is the kind of thing that needs to be to track because of the nature of finding potential people regarding property and the negotiation process and timeline other people may have.
I'm sorry, so Member Marion pointed something out, and I have not had a chance to really read through this. And I'm sorry that I hadn't, but one of the things it does say is that Ed Code 17388 mandates the governing board appoint a district advisory committee, often referred to as a 7-Eleven committee. Have we done that?
Member Pats, you spoke earlier about getting ahead of ourselves. When a school district is ready to completely give up a property, declare its surplus, say we don't need it for 20 years, then that Ed Code certainly comes into play. But I would really recommend we all wait for some more conversation that I could... So, I can share more information with you in closed session regarding what we're talking about.
Yeah, so I'm... Yeah. I'm not ready to declare that property surplus and give up on it. And we haven't decided to close that school. So, I mean, I think we are getting ahead of ourselves and that we need to... We need a closed session to authorize Dr. Rubio to explore options. And then we will certainly have open sessions to discuss what is going to happen and what people think about that, or what is proposed to happen, rather, and what people think about that. So, I'm going to call the question. Do we have a roll call, please, on Member Pats's motion to, which I was... Believe is basically remove the item from the agenda entirely?
I guess I'm making a positive, it's to approve the agenda without that item.
Okay.
Member Collins Rogers?
Aye.
Member Marion?
Yes.
Member Pats?
Yes.
President Affeld?
I'm going to vote no, but the motion carries. And, you know, we will proceed without that agenda item. And if we've lost a chance to gain any revenue as a result of that, Superintendent, you'll let us know and, you know, we'll call up some sort of special meeting or otherwise.
Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I'll also have to apologize for the second weekend... Second meeting in a row to have invited individuals to help give us more information. So, I'll do that, and I guess we'll determine how we're proceeding.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is public comment. Is there any public comment on items not on the agenda within our jurisdiction?
First of all, I'd like to thank the three members of the board for not rushing into this tonight here. Instead, sort of, you made a sort of a declaration that you don't want this to be more public. What's to become of NE8's campus should be more public. So, I'd like to thank the three members of the board for that vote. But now I want to talk about, to continue the conversation I was having before, primarily with our newest board member, Ms. Collins. Since you're new, I'm just going to... You know, I've been here with my daughter. I have a daughter in the school district here, and so I've witnessed what's happened here. And I'm going to continue to sort of tell you my impression of this district and this board and this board president moving forward. Now, I'm sure you're aware of the Vergara case. And just for those who are watching on television, Vergara is a case that's being contended right now in Los Angeles, and it's brought by a Silicon Valley billionaire who wants to disempower teachers' unions. And he thinks that... This billionaire thinks that public education will be helped if only we can get rid of teachers' unions, especially teacher union tenure. And he thinks that this guy thinks this guy named... I guess his name's not Vergara, but...
It's a student's name.
The Vergara case maintains that public education will be helped if we can pay teachers really poorly and remove their job security. It's an absurd idea, I think. I mean, the reason why we're able to pay teachers so badly in America and specifically in this district and every other district is because that they have tenure. Without... If you take away their tenure, then they've got... There's nothing there except for low pay. And so, we are able to buy better quality teachers with the fact that they have tenure. But that's going to be gotten rid of now if this Vergara case moves forward. And who here in this district supports Vergara? Well, our previous superintendent, Deborah Lindo. And she offered her position as Emory Superintendent to give gravitas to a case where she was going to provide an argument in support of Vergara against the teachers' union. And who here on this board supports Deborah Lindo, our former superintendent? Mr. Affeld. Now, when Mr. Affeld got on the board, the first action right after... Right pre... Right the meeting before he got on the board was the teachers' resolution, the infamous teachers' resolution, where 93% of our teachers said that they can't work with this superintendent, Ms. Lindo. Please help us, Bart. We can't work with this woman. We have no confidence in her. And what did Mr. Affeld and the other board members that are now all gone do? They ignored the teachers, and then they went one step farther, and they issued a resolution of their own supporting Ms. Lindo, the one that wants to privatize the schools and strip the teachers' union of their power of tenure. So, that is Mr. Affeld. That is our board president, the one that supported Ms. Lindo for an entire year, was silent, would not support our teachers.
You're out of time.
And that's Mr... You should know who you're working with, and that's Mr. Affeld. Thank you. Please check out the veracity of my comments.
Yeah, once again, just to correct the record, Mr. Donahue was wrong. I didn't support the action. I wasn't even on the board that he's talking about. And I'm publicly quoted in the LA Times as an opponent of the Vergara litigation. We're on to reports. We have a report from ETA. A CSCA. We don't have a student rep with us tonight. So, we'll skip over that. Do we have... You have a principal's report?
I don't think Mr. Ferber is able to join us tonight.
Okay. So, Superintendent's report.
Yes, good evening, everyone. I just would like to share with the board that we've had a series of rounds of pre-screening interviews. I think I shared this recently and some communication in the last couple of days with the board. But I just would like to share in public, thank Ms. Harrell for her support and help. We have been working hard and trying to be earlier in identifying potential teacher candidates as well as potential administrative candidates. So, that process is going well, and we started that right after our March 12th community meeting two Saturdays ago in terms of the actual face-to-face meetings. I just would like to also share that I met with a small team of teachers at the high school today who are concerned about trying to create the best master schedule for next year. And we had a very productive meeting this afternoon, and that is something that we're looking at. And we're... The teachers and I and Ms. McDonald are trying to determine that work now before the end of the school year so that we're well-prepared for next year for the high school master schedule. That's my report, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I have a president's report tonight, so we're going to go right on the consent calendar. Do we... Yeah, there are no public comments on consent calendar items.
No, he's talking to reports, but there's no comments on reports.
Oh, on the report?
Five is consent.
Oh, I see. Yeah, there's not a public comment on that.
He can comment on consent, though.
Consent... Do we have any items that people wish to pull off consent? I want to pull off personnel actions.
I don't want to pull it off, but we have to, which is 5.2. And so, it was... I'm laughing because the... It was a comment made before the meeting. We were taking wages to whether or not we'd finally be able to approve those minutes, and we still can't. We still don't have quorum, or enough majority, I should say.
So, we'll take 5.2, we'll pull that. And I need to pull 5.1. Any... Anything else?
5.6.
And 5.6, oh, yeah. All right, so...
I'm sorry, did we pull 5.5?
Yes.
Oh, we didn't, thank you.
We're pulling everything, basically, except 5.3 and 5.4.
So, I'll move, we approve those.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, a roll call, please.
Member Collins?
Aye.
Member Marion?
Yes.
Member Pats?
Yes.
President Affeld?
Yes. So, the motion carries unanimously on items 5.3 and 5.4. Let's go to warrants. So, I had one question on the warrants, and that was around the $24,000 or so for Jeff Kaplan.
Oh, he didn't see the email. Oh, okay, but it's...
Yeah, is that not a...
The warrants that were attached to this meeting are incorrect or incorrectly attached. I'm sorry, Ms. Tamery was trying to reach you earlier today. They're from the Jan... Why that looks familiar is because the January warrants were accidentally attached to this meeting.
I see.
So, it's not actually...
I didn't understand what you tried to tell me before the meeting, Ms. Tamery. So, we're not giving Jeff Kaplan another $24,000?
No, we're not. I appreciate you asking.
When we just gave him one in January?
That's correct.
That's already approved and done?
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, well, do we have... What about our current warrants that you...
They're attached now to their online. They're currently attached to your agendas online, I believe.
When did those get attached?
That was early this morning, when we realized that we had the error.
I see. All right. Well, then I... Then I'm going to need a minute to see if I have any question on any of these. Recommend my other board members do, or...
It takes more than a minute, I think we may have to postpone. For me, I'd either... I'm going to abstain if it comes to a vote.
What's the consequence of... Can we postpone this to the next meeting and do two warrants then?
I think that's okay. These checks of our, I believe... Let me see what the... Oh, I'm looking at the wrong ones again. Oh, no, no, these are correct, right? Yeah. I don't believe... It hasn't come up before for me, so I don't believe there's a problem with that. But I'm not having... I think we're fine. These are... Yeah.
And I think... I think we'd run into a little bit of a public notice issue as well. If one or two minor changes to an attachment, that's one thing. But a wholesale different attachment wouldn't allow the public to come and comment on something. I mean, I've never had to comment on a warrant, but...
The state board substitutes and changes puts in attachments all the time. The item was noticed, but I'm fine putting it over. was noticed, but I'm fine putting it over. And it sounds like we can account, you know, it's not, it's not gonna run anyone into...
No, these come to you after they're processed, I believe is a regular practice, so I believe we're fine.
Okay. Everyone okay with that? I don't, I don't know that we need a formal motion.
I appreciate the direction and sorry for that mistake. We'll go ahead and bring these back.
Okay. So we'll, we'll bring these back. Now that we've pulled this item, you, you can come up and comment on it if you'd like, Mr. Donahue.
Regarding warrants, what everyone needs to know regarding what, what the school board president just said, Mr. Affeld. He said he doesn't support the Vergara decision. He was been on, he's been, he said publicly he doesn't support it. He may have said that. However, in this district, he signed his name to a resolution endorsing, disavowing the teachers, 93% of them, and supporting the former superintendent, Ms. Lindo, who, who testified at Vergara, who offered to testify at Vergara as an Emory superintendent against the teachers' tenure, against teachers' unions. So the 93% of our teachers signed this resolution saying they can't work with this superintendent of ours, Ms. Lindo. And you need to understand, everybody watching and the new board member needs to understand that Mr. Affeld was asked by 93% of the teachers, could you please help us? We don't, we have no confidence in this teacher. I'm sorry, in this superintendent. And Mr. Affeld did nothing, did, would not help the teachers. That's factually true. And then Mr. Affeld sat there as the resolution supporting Ms. Lindo, the school privatizer, the anti-teacher super, previous superintendent of ours. There was a resolution of the board supporting Ms. Lindo at the expense of the teachers. So in other words, the, the board listened to the teachers' resolution, then decided to ignore the teachers. And we're talking about, when I say the board, I mean Mr. Affeld and his colleagues. Decided to ignore 93% of our teachers. And then instead, write a resolution of their own countering the teachers, saying that, no, we like this woman, who's a privatizer of public education and who later on went on to support the Vergara case. So Mr. Affeld is, so that, when he's, when he's publicly saying just now that he didn't, he doesn't support Vergara, well, that may be true. But it's also true that he, what I just elucidated about him. He, he would not support our teachers, 93% of our teachers, who asked for, please help, please help us, we cannot work with our superintendent. And no matter what Mr. Affeld says about that, that's factually true. That's, that's historically, that's what happened. It's a matter of public record. It can be verified. And if you want to read the teachers' resolution, you can go to my blog. It's called the Emeryville Tattler. And there's a search bar, and you type in "teachers' resolution." You can read a text of the resolution, or you can ask any teacher. And then you ask any teacher that's, you know, a veteran teacher, did Mr. Affeld support the teachers when they were, you know, when they wrote the teachers' resolution? And they will tell you, no, that Mr. Affeld, in fact, did not support the teachers. Thank you very much.
All right. Pretty much all of that was completely factually false. But the, we're moving on. And the next item is 5.5, personnel actions.
Yes, thank you. Ms. Harrell's here tonight, our HR director, to give us some information and introduce a new employee to us. Ms. Harrell.
Okay. For the balance of this year and going into next year, we have just hired our ELD teacher. Her name is Ms. Judith Mattson. Ms. Mattson has worked in public education for over 26 years. Most recently, she worked with the ACOE Fame Charter School. And she has a certi, she has a mindfulness and education teaching certification from the mindful schools located here in Emeryville, California. She is now semi-retired and was looking to return to the classroom teaching in order to work with students using mindfulness techniques to improve learning and overall well-being. Ms. Judith Mattson.
Thank you. Would you like to come up, Ms. Mattson? And, okay, okay, very good, very good. Low pressure. Welcome to the district, and we look forward to your service. Do we have a motion?
So we talked last time about the large number of teachers that we were losing. Is this another name to add to the vacancy list?
It is, but people don't always, sometimes people leave for enhancements, for administrative positions, or sometimes, such as this instance, they're relocating with their family out of state.
But it's one more vacancy?
Yes, sir, it is.
And then did we ever, we, we posed a lot of questions about numbers and percentages and things, and did we ever get that information?
I didn't get a chance to email it. I can't email it after tonight, but I do have it here with me.
Okay.
If we look at the 50 teachers that we have, compiling all of their years collectively, we have like over 355 years, so that averages to about seven years tenure within the district. And I took the first nine, we have one person who's been here 22 years, one person who's been here 19, another person been here 18 and a half, 18, two people been here 15 years, three people been here 14. Then we move down to having two people who've been here 13 years, 12, three people been here 10. So then it starts to trickle down from there.
Okay.
I'll have to look at that. Thank you.
Do we have a motion to adopt item 5.5?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second it.
Roll call, please.
Member Ash?
Yes.
Member Collins Rogers?
Yes.
Member Marion?
Yes.
Member Pats?
Yes.
President Affeld?
Item 5.6, Member Marion has pulled, is ratification list. Member Marion?
Thank you, President. Yes, on ratification, or on item 5.6, I have one item pertaining to a amendment correspondence, COR, number 248. And it has to do with the Building A sanitary sewer sump pit alarm. And maybe if Mr. Baker is here...
She is.
He might stand to the, or step up to the podium. Based on that COR number 248, the sump pit, was that on the original documents?
No, the, the issue here is that when, the concern was that once we dug up the utilities in the street, that the sewer line is actually higher than a portion of Building A. And the concern was that if there was a break in the sewer line, you could get material or, or sewage seeping through the soil and into the building. So what we did is we installed a sump pit, a sump pit and a sump pump at the corner of that building, so that if that could hap, would happen, we would be able to mitigate that.
And that serves only Building A, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so the remainder of the campus is on natural, or basically gravity flow to the main, within the street?
Correct, that is correct.
Okay. All right, that's what I needed to know. All right, thank you.
Yeah, I also was gonna pull this item. And generally, are these... Do you have the ratification list? Is that what you're trying to pull up?
No, I, I apologize. I set this on top of the other laptop.
Do you have, are these items ones that we knew were coming? Or are they surprises?
Each of the items on this list has been included in the budget for quite some time. We're really just finalizing pricing for these at this point. I do want to point out something actually on this, and I, we'll be doing a report at a future board meeting on how we've been doing against the submitted change orders, and then how we've negotiated those. For example, the items on this list, the originally submitted amount was $32,000 higher for these items. Then we find that we, after our review and negotiation, we're able to have those reduced by that amount. And I'll give a report in an upcoming board meeting to show, and the aggregate, how we've done in our negotiations with Turner, to get these numbers down is, is, is low, as reasonable and appropriate.
Okay. So it's $32,000 less than, than was sort of...
For these items, yes.
Expected earlier in the process.
Than what was originally submitted.
All right. And I think you're gonna report later about the extent to which we're within the contingencies for the project.
Correct.
All right, so we'll save that for that piece. The, the last item that Member Marion was raising, that's, yeah, I guess, it sounded a little concerning that there could be sewer backflow going into one of our buildings. I mean, what's the likelihood of that? And are these measures gonna reduce that?
Fairly minimal. The, what would happen is if you had a sewer break, for example, you can have subsurface flow. It's right below the sidewalk, so you could have subsurface flow into the, into the, it would go towards Building A, which is, as you, if you walk on the site, you can see it's kind of set below the street, would then could possibly seep through there and, and get into the building. So if we have that at that corner of the building, the southeast corner is where we put this sump pit and, this sump pit and pump in. So you could, you would not, it would mitigate any impact to the other, the rest of the building.
Okay. All right, any other questions?
I might dovetail or add on to what you mentioned about the overall cost, and maybe we can get into this at a later point. But with the changes that have been addressed here are shown here, and any of the other ones that were previously been approved, how have we been dealing with the state architect pertaining to CCD submittals and the additional fees included for their review? Has that been accounted for in the budget?
Yes, in fact, we just today did our reconciliation of the budget for the month through the end of February. And we budgeted an appropriate amount. The DSA calculates those fees differently than they used to. They used to simply do a straight percentage of your change orders. Now it's done more based on the effort required to review the CDCs. And so I asked DSK architects to estimate what they thought that would be. And we, it's not a significant amount, but we did, we have included that in the budget.
I just, I just don't want to have this happen where the project is winding up and there's additional fees down the road, six months, a year later, that they come after. I just want to make sure that that is included prior to the opening of the school. So that's my concern.
Yes, it's been included in the budget. Now, now that we have a pretty good idea where we are, 'cause we don't anticipate many more CDCs, we have included an allowance in the budget for that.
Do we have a motion on this item?
Public comment on item 5.6.
Is there any further discussion on 5.6? Mr. Donahue, would you like to make a comment on item 5.6, please?
So sometimes parents come up here and they say things, and, you know, you don't know if they're true or not. And sometimes board members will say things, you don't know if they're true or not. Sometimes the board president that says things, and you can't be certain if it's true or not, we have found that he has, he's not, he's not past using canards and what have you. So how do you know? So, so I'm alleging something, and then the, the, the board president, Mr. Affeld, is alleging something different. Who's telling the truth? How does somebody know? Well...
Is this about ratifications?
Yes, it is. So how do you know? Who's telling the truth? How does a person know? Well, I think you should, like, ask somebody else. I think, in this case, you should ask the teachers. Ask the teachers. Is it, is it, is it true that Mr. Affeld, after we, after you, you, the teachers of at Emory Unified, 93% of you, did the teachers' resolution, signed the teachers' resolution and presented that to the board? Is it true that the board, that Mr. Affeld, then board member Affeld, not president, did not support the resolution? Is that true? That's, this is what this, this parent, Mr. Donahue is alleging. Is that true? And see what they say. See if they, because I've asked Mark Davis, the, he's the ETA vice president. He said, no, Mr. Affeld, in fact, did, was, joined his colleagues and they, and they did not support the teachers after they read the, they passed the resolution. In fact, Mr. Affeld signed it, you know, signed on to the, the resolution countering the teachers' resolution whereby they, I said they support and, and endorse Ms. Lindo and her privatizing schemes. So, so don't take my word for it. Please ask any teacher, any teacher that's, that's taught here for at least, since at least three or four years. And find out the veracity of, of Board President Affeld. Find out if Mr. Affeld is telling us the truth. And don't take my word for it, and don't take Mr. Affeld's word for it. Thank you.
All right. Do we have a motion on the ratification list?
So moved.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Member Ash?
Yes.
Member Collins Rogers?
Yes.
Member Marion?
Yes.
Member Pats?
Yes.
President Affeld?
Yes. All right, we're on to discussion items. Item 6.1, superintendent.
Yes, thank you very much. The purpose of this item is to bring this back in front of the board, to consider approval for a place structure for the ECCL site, primarily for the K5 students. I have one correction to make, board members, if I could. This isn't a, is a lower amount than I was presenting last time to you, but I still do need to adjust it to account for tax, and I apologize if that's not in this. Instead of $219,000, that should read $237,007. So 237,007. We have Mr. Baker again here this evening. We have taken a good amount of staff time to research and find the information you asked for. And if you have any additional questions for Mr. Baker, I, he's available this evening. I will just share with the board also that I did try to get someone in Boston to take a couple up-close photos, but I couldn't pull that off this week. I was able to see it on Google Maps. It is there in the park. Looks good. So, but Mr. Baker, do you want to share, or the board members, maybe they have some questions for you?
Yes, I, I had a, a few comments to show. I don't, if someone could assist me with the...
Oh, click on the arrow.
Click on, just click on the arrow.
Click on the arrow.
There's no password. There you go.
Thank you.
It's down in the doc. It's the PDF, right down in the doc.
The PDF at the bottom, all the way to the left. On your document, the bottom.
I'm sorry, I'm not able to view where this window is. I just want you to computer.
It's the one that says ECCL update revised. That's it, John. It says, it says revised. Oh, he's on it, isn't he?
She's on it, so.
It was in the first place you were, to go back to.
So we're on the wall hall item now, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
originally specified included a wall holla play structure in the original ECCL design. It's a play structure which allows for vertical and horizontal climbing. It has been, it was located in the community commons, which is the primary K-35 recess area. In June of 2014, if you recall, to align the project scope with the budget, the city and district committee removed the wall holla from the project during its value engineering process. At the last meeting, we, I gave a brief presentation on the wall holla. I've got some more information here. However, there's some questions were raised by the board, specifically around ADA access, durability of materials, access by adults, performance for other school districts, the cork, as I described, synthetic cork material, which I described, the width of it, and some other items. So, in the board packet, there's quite a bit of information provided by DSK Architects and ourselves. I've got just a brief summary of those things here. The first is a site plan showing the location of the wall holla, which is adjacent to Building B, which is to the right of the photograph there. You'll see a curved line around that, which is an EPDM rubber surface material. That is the resilient material around and below the wall holla. You can see that it's no less than six feet around the wall holla at every, all around its edges. That is what is, in fact, what's recommended by the manufacturers, four feet. We increased that to six to make sure there's an added level of protection. You'll see that the, those V-shaped items are seat walls. We would be removing the concrete seat wall where it is not shown shaded, and would have that EPDM rubber material and the wall holla on top of that. This is an elevation. It's a bit hard to read, but you can see the top of the wall holla is about to the height of the windowsill on the second floor, slightly above the roof that comprises the canopy. It has, features as a sliding pole, has a kind of a boulder wall, has openings on the commons side, has, and adds some, has a plastic slide on the commons side, which in plan is, you can see there, where it says plastic slide towards the bottom, and has openings at each end. In terms of durable materials, there are detailed specifications in the board packet. I'm here to answer any questions the board may have about those items. There's also some, several awards that this, this play structure's received around the world. Also, if there are any questions about those, I can speak to those. Other installations include the Jackson Square Playground in Boston, Massachusetts, Rouge Crest Park in Richmond Hill, Ontario, and the Hagerty School in Cambridge, Massachusetts. The, in terms of ADA accessibility, which is one of the primary concerns the board had, part of the design includes an ADA transfer station, which allows children with disabilities access. That's included in the project, and I'll show you a diagram of that. It's 100% accessible from the ground level, and I'll show you, again, an example of that from the Hagerty School. So this is a photograph of what the, of, this is the model that we are discussing that shows the heavy-duty plastic slides within. The grid material on the outside has a very narrow, one-inch by about four-inch grill on it, so it's very difficult to climb, and it's really, it's considered climb-proof. So you can only really access it by entering the ground-level openings. Some other, there's an example of a ground-level opening, and some other images of, on the little right-hand corner of the curved plastic material. This is the Hagerty School wall holla, which is a very similar design. In fact, the only difference on this design is the slide that you see on the left of the photograph, and the one being proposed for ECCL is in the front, to the, between that, that purple ladder and the right-hand edge. But other than that, it's a very similar design. If you see right here, at the bottom-left-hand corner in both photographs, there's a brown section with handles, and that's an accessible, an accessible area for, with children with disabilities. If we look at this diagram, you see the transfer platform that allows, allows children to transfer from a wheelchair or other mobility device using handles and can climb in and access the wall at that, at that, at that location. So again, the discussion item tonight is approval of a purchase order to order the wall holla in the amount of $237,07. That now includes taxes and shipping, and that would be the vendor who provides this, who's the sole source for the wall holla in North America, or in California, I'm sorry. And they would, that, that would be procured with board action.
What can you tell us about the width of the cork and the, how wide around that is again?
So the, the, it's not, again, it's not a cork material per se. It's an EPDM rubber surface, which is a, similar to what you see in fitness centers and playgrounds. It's a, it's a fairly dense material which allows, which is very resilient. The manufacturer recommended four feet from the edges of all, of all the wall holla elements. DSK, in our discussions with ourselves and to respond to the board, increased that to six feet so that it's got a six-foot away from all the wall holla elements all the way around.
Is that the line we see?
That's the curved line that you see. The, in fact, really the only curved line you see in the, in the diagram.
I would add, just for the board's information, that the city, we looked with the city staff about a month back regarding potential locations where it could be installed without interfering with a great amount of underground utilities. And the city's preference was that it was alongside the admin building in this area as well. And we're trying to do our best, of course, to make sure we have a play structure and not impede drastically on the area that the city would like to have with those, that little seating wall and the cork that sort of angles down to, towards an outdoor stage.
So those are both seating walls?
Yes. Those were there prior to the wall holla.
So in regards to those students with disabilities, I remember you were saying there was a ramp, or there was this open platform for them to, yeah, at the bottom level?
Right. So if you can see that it's brown in color, in fact, it's the only thing that's brown in color. It's a few inches off the ground, then it kind of ramps up to a bit higher. You'll see that there are handles at that location. That'll allow a student in a wheelchair or other mobility device to transfer to that platform, and they would be able to engage in climbing as well.
And so the width and the height will allow someone with a wheelchair to leave the wheelchair outside of the actual play structure?
Correct. Correct.
Can you go back to the shot that shows the wall holla against the back, with the building as the backdrop? Yeah, that one. So, we didn't talk about this last time, but you're blocking, are you, some windows there, or at least you're in front of some?
So it's a bit hard to see, and I apologize. I don't have a pointer here if I, but you'll see that there are, I can walk over.
So I guess, the question is, yeah, can the superintendent no longer look out onto the yard at the, on those windows right behind the wall holla?
One out too much.
Okay.
Yeah.
The first of the lines I pointed out is the windowsill at the second floor. The second line is the top of the canopy roof. For those of you who've been on site, you'll see there's a one-story canopy that sets back. This does, this is in front, you'll see that, below that, there are a number of smaller windows, and those would be, this would be in front of those, but it lets light through. This faces west, so quite a bit of light's going to get through there. Plus, those windows are underneath the canopy already, so they're shaded, but really-
What's behind those windows?
Behind the windows? Those are, those are actually the offices for, those are the superintendent's office, the main reception office, and one, I think that's it, those are the three, those are the doors that enter into the, enter into the space.
Okay. And, yeah, I guess- Superintendent's recommending we put this here, and so he must think it's more important than a view of the yard.
I think it's very critical. My office, Mr. Baker, just to make, correct Mr. Baker for a second, is not right there. I'm actually on the other side. But I do think it's important that we have this structure, and I'm concerned about the six-month lead time that we need.
My last question is about the wall, then. Is that the sitting wall, is that underneath the wall holla?
So what would happen is, this, where the V-shaped seating walls are, you'll see they're shaded, they're kind of speckled. Those would remain. You see the lines in the area of the EPDM rubber. That's where we would remove or not build the seat walls.
Got it. Got it. That's clear.
You mentioned the EPDM rubber. Last time we talked, it was cork. And so how did we switch from cork to synthetic rubber?
What, the description that the architect had given us was it's sort of a synthetic cork, so that's where I got that from. Technically, it's an EPDM rubber.
And what's the safety of EPDM rubber?
It, it is, it's used in outdoor playgrounds. You'll see it under play structures. It's, it's, it's a commonly-used product. I don't know specifically the safety, and I don't, we can certainly report back to the board. In fact, one thing I want to point out is that the, the long lead time is actually ordering the wall holla structure, the rectangular structure. We have quite a bit of time to actually do further research on the resilient material, the EPDM, and look at alternates to that. That has a much less lead time than does the structure itself.
And what's the lifespan of the poured rubber?
I would have to, I would have to do some more research and report back to the board, but I'm happy to do so.
Because it's at, it's in Knox's Playground, and it just gets chunked up. I mean, it was wonderful for about two weeks, and it was just destroyed by kids using it. I mean, we're talking a lot of kids every day. So I'm just wondering the lifespan on that.
Well, I'm, I'm happy to work with the architect to look in alternatives and report back with some more detail. That, fortunately, that's, that's something, we don't need to make that decision probably for a couple of months.
But you can look into the lifespan and-
Certainly.
-see if there's, if it's reasonable, or if there are other alternatives. Are there other questions, Mr. Marion?
Yes. Mr. Baker, there are three things, I think. One is the proximity to the covered walkway adjacent to the wall holla structure. Given it's, on the plan, it's three feet, that seems a little bit, a little tight, and you're giving a generous space on the other side of six feet for your fall zone. Suggestion to move it away from that, just to allow for breathing room and a possibility of, I keep going back to the fact is that I think they can still climb it, and that's ability to get up on the second, sec floor on the roof. So I just, just precaution on that side. Another one is the, let's see here, bear with me. The, has this, I think, when I, I actually had a chance to speak with the architect, Mark Zabalek, pertaining to this specific play structure, and he indicated to me that they were going to present or submit this to Division of State Architect for their review and approval. And if that's the case, they, as you probably well know, we've dealt with regarding, like, the steel shop drawings and, anyway, the problem we had with the steel as far as DSA involvement. I have a sneaking feeling that they're going to come back with additional requirements such as foundation work or whatever. It's a wild card dealing with them. With this change order and ordering this from a vendor, how are we rectify the cost, if there is a cost overrun pertaining to DSA requirements? I just, you know, it's just a wild card, and I don't want to be coming back, having you come back and say, we need additional $30,000 for foundation work. It's this that, has that been accounted for, or what's, what's the status of that?
So, we actually have reviewed this with DSA. DSK took this into DSA to review this because it is a unique structure. They, they replied back, and it's in, in writing, that they do not want to review anything other than the footing, the concrete that supports it. That's all they'd like to review.
And then finally, the, in the information given to us from the manufacturer and from DSK, they state that the warranty period starts the date of invoice. That seems really unfair for the purchaser because that invoice could be six months out, and you've lost six months of warranty period. So is there any possibility of getting an additional warranty aspect to that, to the, to the assembly when it arrives on the site and installed?
We will certainly look, look into that and bring that back to the board. I don't believe that will, that's something that can be added on. It doesn't need to be in the original invoice. I believe we can add on an extended warranty. Typically, you can, but we can, we will research that and report back to the board.
Are there other board questions? Superintendent, do you have anything to add?
Just one or two things. Thank you, Mr. Baker. I really, I, just one more, one quick comment. If, Mr. Baker, can you go back to that slide? If we had another normal, traditional type of play structure to accommodate about 60 children, it would take up that whole space, and that would be a problem for really the city as well. So I think this is a really, a good option for our children, and again, I just, I'm hoping the board will approve this tonight so we can go ahead and move forward on this.
Has the city opined one way or another on this play structure?
No, no, they have not. They just, the discussions with the city were limited to its location.
Okay. All right. Do we have any public comment on this item?
I just have one question. Was there, was there an answer, Don, to your question about whether it can come off the wall?
It's just a suggestion, that's all I-
Yeah, just from the, from the, the children and adults that are in my life, three feet, it wouldn't be very difficult to scale.
So we asked the architects today, they believe that without, one of our problems is all of our site utilities run through this. That's the sort of, been the big issue on the project all along. They, they're confident it can be moved five feet away from that, and we can look into moving it further. So we can at least add two feet for that, to that, which is a big difference between this and that.
Yeah. I think that would be enough. Don, what do you think?
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, it mimics what's going on the other side, and that's open. So if you have five feet, and just, you know, it, it looks like it's sufficient, if it goes to, let's say, five feet.
Yeah, I could straddle it. I'm short.
Okay. So you'll look into those public comment.
Okay, I'm going to have to engage in a tutorial again for Mr. Affeld and the rest of the school board. The way this is supposed to work is a presentation is made. This is the way public comments are supposed to happen. A presentation is made, the board then is allowed to ask clarifying questions to the presenter. Then you're supposed to open the public comment, then you have substantive comments from the board, then you take your vote. Otherwise, if you do it the way that Mr. Affeld's doing it right now, whereas you have the clarifying questions and the substantive comments from the board, then the public comment after the discussion's already been made, right before the vote, which means the public isn't listened to. And the public gets the impression that they have, they make no difference whatsoever. So I remind Mr. Affeld, that's the way it's supposed to work. There's, it's, there's a procedure here. Presentation made, clarifying comments by the board, public comment, substantive discussion by the board, vote by the board. That's the way it's supposed to work. If you don't do it that way, you're cheating the public out of a chance to have, to be able to be, make a difference and be, actually be listened to. So please do that in the future, Mr. Affeld. And the rest of the board, I would appreciate it if you would check the veracity of my claims here about this is the way the process is supposed to work. And if you find that to be true, could you please remind your colleague, Mr. Affeld, to, to, you know, engage, allow the public to engage in the proper manner? Thank you. Now, with regard to the fiction that's being spun here, Mr. Affeld is putting out here in the ether and for the cameras, for the people watching, that there was a meeting whereby the public was invited to tour the Amerunified, I'm sorry, the ECCL, and that that counted for the so-called second meeting whereby the, it was going to be discussed the wisdom of closing NE8's elementary school. Well, that's fiction. That's not a real meeting. That's not, that is a bait and switch. That's not a, a proper meeting whereby the public could weigh in on the wisdom of closing NE8. That's a tour of a facility. So- could weigh in on the wisdom of closing NE8. That's a tour of a facility. So now this board is engaging in discussions with this Yung Ming Charter School, a private charter school, to give our public school to that private concern. And we were never allowed, the public was, has so far not been allowed to discuss the wisdom of closing NE8. And we were promised that for many years. If Ms. Collins looks in the Measure J language, which the people of Emoryville voted on to
We're out of time.
... ECCL, you'll notice there's nothing in there about K-12 facility. Thank you very much.
Now, comments for Mr. Affeld.
Thank you for wasting your breath on that, because now is the time that we are moving to discussion on the wall hollow to determine, people want to go forward. Is there any further discussion on the wall hollow now that we've had our questions answered? Do we have a motion on wall hollow item? Actually, before we go to the motion, my discussion point is, I appreciate Mr. Baker's information and that of the architect. Obviously, a fair amount of work was done to actually pay attention to the questions and bring back information. The disability thing was a big issue for me that Member Marion raised, and I am satisfied that they've thought about that, and the design incorporates disabled access. So, and then the other concerns, it seems to be innovative and interesting way to effectively use, efficiently use the space. So I'm in favor of their proposal to move forward. Any other thoughts?
Can I ask Mr. Baker one more question? Can you go to the podium, please? Just one more quick question. In regards to, because I've seen, just doing some Google research in terms of the other structures that other facilities have utilized in Europe and other continents and countries as well to follow, when it comes to the wall hollow, there's certain styles that they have for the slide. Is there an actual slide design that has been picked out with this structure, or is that still something that can be discussed further?
Yeah, a slide structure has been selected. It is essentially like the one shown there, where it's got a tube at the top, and then it's open at the bottom. I believe that there, I don't know, to be honest, whether there are other slide structures provided. This is what's being recommended by the architect. We could certainly look at that, since that is a sort of an accessory. My, I would presume that that could be changed after the order's placed, so we can look into that as well.
Does it come out the end? I thought it came out the middle.
It does. It comes, this is, this is the one at the Hagerty School. It comes out between, you'll see that ladder and the vertical pole, between those two.
So it does come out in the middle?
Correct.
Yeah, you have different options.
It looks to be like a module unit where it can be placed anywhere around the structure. So I think it's probably the same form, but just located in a different location.
That's correct. So we have some choices.
And then for the color scheme, was that, I'm seeing more of a gray and orange theme? Was that?
Yes, that's, that's the color scheme.
And is there any color options in terms of trying to stick with our Spartan colors or the lion colors?
That I, I don't, all the photographs we've seen are of this orange color. I've not seen any other options. We can certainly look into that as well.
We can check. I did, I think I may have spotted one in Germany, which actually may be the largest currently, which I believe is a very bright green. I'm not sure that's the color. Well, we can, we can certainly ask the manufacturer.
I think color plays an important part in the Bay Area. I, you know, I'm noticing it's Boston and Canada where the other ones are, and those places tend to be much more humid, so color doesn't, everything gets hot there, it doesn't matter. But that's going to bake in our sun and be almost unusable in September. But I've, I have not liked this design all along. I feel like you answered all the questions, more or less as I thought they would be. I just don't like the particular design. I don't like that we have to have something shipped from a Nordic country as opposed to having something domestic. But I think that's more personal preference than anything else. So, but I do worry it's going to be hot and unusable in the summertime.
Other discussion? Do we have a motion on this item?
Yes, I move approval.
I second. Can we have a roll call, please?
Member Ash?
Yes.
Member Collins Rogers? Member Marion?
Yes.
Member Pants?
No.
President Affeld?
Yes. The item carries four to one. We're on to item 6.2, our ECCL update. Mr. Baker, you're up again.
Thank you. All right, so this is the monthly update for the ECCL project. I want to point out that this is, this is the same presentation, including the board packet, however, we've put some more current photographs in here. And this can be distributed, Ms. Tamery can distribute this to the board with the new photographs. Again, just for orientation, Building A is the community building at the corner of 53rd and San Pablo. Building B is the administration building along San Pablo. Building C is the K-88 school and multi-use facility in the middle of the site. Building D is the high school at the corner of 47th and San Pablo. Building E is the gym and pool at the, at the western edge of the site. And also, you can see the field and the community commons. There's been quite a bit of great progress over the last week and a half since we had a very rainy week two weeks ago. Built the, in the gym, the gym and locker rooms have been operational for over two months now. The pool adjacent rooms, concession and fitness are complete. We're doing final cleaning and moving the furniture in next week. The pool work itself is 90% complete. The fat last 10% has been a bit of a hurdle with the weather, but I'll show you about, I'll talk about that later. The high school work, interior work is complete, the high school interior work, we had held off in four areas. Ceilings, flooring, doors, and wood casework. The ceiling grids are now in. We're installing those with all the rest of the ceilings in the site. Again, we had done that to save a little bit of remobilization. The flooring doors and wood casework, we'd held off on those because those are impacted by temperature and moisture. We've now got temper protection and have conditioned the space, and we're now acclimating the space so that we can start installation of those. The high school elevator stair deck work is well underway now. That, again, is the work that was held off because of the site utilities and needing access through that site. The community building A exterior is complete. Interior is really about complete. In fact, our site, the site team's going to be moving into Building A next week, removing the trailers from the site. So our office space will be in Building A for the next few, couple of months. The admin building B, in fact, MEP roughing, it's, we've completed, we've now got MEP roughing complete, we've now got interior drywall almost complete, the exterior walls are now complete. That building's moved very quickly in the last week and a half. And then finally, the K-88 school, the roof and exterior wall sheath are incomplete. We're about to start stucco on half the building. We're about probably two-thirds with our moisture barrier building paper on that building. And so that building will be closed in pretty soon here. Change order report, and again, we're looking at the industry standard change orders as percent of construction costs, and these were in part considered in the contingency for the original project, which the overall contingency originally was 7%, 6.5% to these categories. We're doing just about as expected on unforeseen conditions. This is things like the East Bay mud pipe, the lead paint in the gym, the rebuild in the roof of the gym. Permit agency requirements about what we'd expected. These are the DSA requirements largely. Design errors and emissions, we're doing better than we would have expected so far, and also better on the contractor's contingency. So we're doing very well on the things which we don't want to spend money or honor these things, because, you know, they are things that don't necessarily provide value. So that means is the bulk of our changes really have been in scope and things that provide value. So it's really, I think it's a good, a good indicator. So on to Building A. Building A is, we've still got the, all the final painting's been done, we've still got the masking over the windows. But the main thing is, inside, it's narrowly complete. This is the large multipurpose room. This is complete except for flooring. We're not going to wait to put the flooring in until after we move, we're going to, we're going to move into this facility for a couple of months. Once we move out, we'll do the flooring last, just so that we don't mark up the flooring. The restrooms are complete in this building. The kitchen, there's a small catering kitchen, and that, we're installing all the kitchen equipment right now. So that's almost done, and that would be operational if we would need to use it for temporary high school occupancy, early high school occupancy, et cetera. Building B, administration, the stucco is complete. There's still a coat of paint that goes over this. This is why you see the masking over the windows. We're putting the masking in today. About, the drywall's probably about 85 to 90% complete. They've done all of this drywall in the last week and a half. And you'll see, this is on the first floor, and this is, this is the first floor, this is actually the, in one of the admin areas between the city offices and district offices. This is the corridor outside the student-based health center, and you can see to the left, that's the view out to the community commons. Building D, one thing has been, that's been interesting is that the paint color, there's a green highlight paint at the corner. It's actually meant to highlight the labs. And each of the buildings has a little bit of this, this color. There's been, there was concern about the color from the city and the district and, and some other folks. And so we looked at alternate colors. So you can see the, the lower left, we tried out some, some different colors. A bluer green that's a little bit darker. We're going to paint this. Fortunately, we've only done a small amount of this green, but that color, after a bunch of discussion and review by the project team and the city and the district, we're going to go ahead and do a different green. And so that, I think, will enhance, it goes along, everyone thinks that it goes, goes well with the red and the tan and the gray, goes a little better and is more in keeping with the rest of the color palette.
You mean, I'm a, I'm a little colorblind. You mean the darker blue, three squares in the lower right?
Correct. The darker blue, it's actually a blue-green, rather than that pale green that you see on the bulk of that, of that wall. The big news is the Building D High School Deck, and of course, this has been the number one issue in the project, is that this is what was delayed because we had to do our site utilities through that space. The framing is up. And so this has gone up really pretty quickly. We had, we, this was, we finished the site utilities in January 15th. We had the rainy January, so we started this about the first week in February with all the footings. Those are all in now. All the steel is now up in the deck structure. And you can see that's a connection between the high school and the K-88 school. That'll have a railing on it, and obviously a concrete deck above that. This is the stair, this is the grand staircase that goes up to the second floor. The elevator sits behind that. The elevator pit is done, and that elevator is going up as well. This is cast someplace concrete, so this is going along, along well. We have, knock on wood, a good weather forecast for the next two weeks, and so we should be able to make really good progress on this. In the high school itself, we have the ceiling grid now up. Remember, we'd held off on the ceiling grid so that we could do it all, sequence it all in one big mobilization throughout the site. All that grid is in now, all the light fixtures are in. So all that's really remaining is putting in the panels. Again, all that's really remaining in the high school spaces are flooring and then wood doors and casework. Those are all at the site now. It's just, and we've now conditioned the building, so those can go in, and those go, those will go in pretty quickly concurrent with the completion of that deck structure. Building C, the K-88 school, we've now finished all the sheeting. The light color you see there is the exterior insulation. This is the west side of the building that faces the field. You'll also see in the foreground, we've got, we've formed up the kind of primary retaining wall along the site, which is the big curved wall that separates the field from that kind of upper level that the, that the K-88 school sits on. On the, on the community commons side, all the scaffolding is up throughout the building. You can see that black, that's the building paper. It's actually a waterproof membrane, but most folks call it building paper. That's almost all up, so we can start, along with the lathe, and so we can start stucco work there fairly soon. Inside the K-88 school, all the MEP roughing's pretty much complete. We're really getting ready to start sheet rocking. And we've got some of the sheath, and you see the green and yellow board. That's water, moisture-resistant board that's gone up in what we call priority walls. You'll see at the upper right-hand corner, there's a kind of a steel beam with kind of V-struts. That's the support for the big, huge divider, which can sort of divide this space into two rooms. And you can see the kind of stage area, which is actually the music room, which is used as a stage area. That also has a, you'll see the track there for the, for the partition that comes down there, so that that can be used as a music room. Building E, we now had our first bit of signage going up, so the Building E exterior signage is going up. Building A will be next. We're starting to put the signage in that kind of shows you what the kind of color and graphics will look like at the site.
Is that, is that an actual E on the building?
That is E for Building E.
You're putting, I didn't realize we were putting letters on buildings.
The, the FAR department requires that.
Really?
Yes.
Okay.
They have to identify on a multi-building site which, which buildings are which.
Okay, wow. There it is. I thought all along these have been schematic designations for your power points.
To the left of that, I apologize, it's outside of the view, it says gymnasium. The, these are the pool restrooms, so the pool lockers are all done, awaiting the completion of the pool. And then, so here's the, there are a couple of shots of the pool. So this work was actually done back in February. The structural part of the pool is the gray you see there, and then you see the gutter system. Again, this is the gutter system where the water is flush with the pool deck. And then, then the, that's the inner blue tile. Then there's a trough there, which is, has a grate that goes over it. So that really, it's, it's the, the pool deck and water are pretty flush with each other. And that, again, is that, with that, that allows easier access and also reduces wave motion to allow more different activities to take place in the pool. You'll see, however, once we pulled the old pool deck up, that we had under there was a bunch of dirt. Normally, under concrete, you have what's called base rock, big, heavy gravel. So we pulled that up, there was no base rock, and then it rained a lot. So we spent the last about three weeks mucking out the dirt and installing new base rock, which is now in place. And that's that gravel that you see there. So now, finally, after, again, the rain always hits when you, when you least need the rain, all that remains here is the deck itself, and then that last layer, layer of plaster inside the pool. And then we fill the, fill the pool full of water. So we're going to be, that concrete work will be done at the end of next week, and we'll be filling the pool about two weeks from now. And then it's got to sit for two weeks before you can use it, because it needs to acclimate. The plaster's got to cure, and then you can install the bromine-based chemicals in the pool.
The lip, and if you can go back to the previous slide, see a little better. It doesn't look flush. It looks like it's an upturn.
It actually, if you can see
I understood it to be a Kennedy-style.
Yeah, the two tile pieces, there's two bands of tile, those are the same elevation, and there's a grate that goes between them. And then the water level is down, the water level is down, maybe, maybe an inch or so below that, that little raised lip of tile that you see there.
And in this pool model, that'll be, in this new model, will it have the diving board as well?
No, it does not have a diving board. There's a whole set of different regulations for diving boards, including a much deeper pool, because the primary use of, this is a community and school joint-use pool, and there wasn't a diving program. But it would have been, there's not enough room, actually, to have a diving board and a pool that's used for, for multi-use. You're going to have both community swim lessons, senior water activities, and, and lap swimming kind of at the same time. And so the diving board was actually taken out of the project quite a while ago by the Architects and Pool Consultant. And there's no program for that, but many school pools do not have diving boards. It's, a lot of, the ones that do almost have a separate diving pool. That's sort of the way that the codes work for diving now. And then the play fields, we have our last, our last batch of dirt, which is not very large, really to haul off. This is really from the pool itself. That's being hauled off on site so we can do the, do the rough, or the rough grading, the really the finished grading for the base rock for the field. The, this is the view along 53rd that shows, this is where we're pouring the concrete for the, the wall and foundation for the fence. You'll see the fence posts are up there now. And so the next big activities, we're really moving into a phase here that now that we have the buildings closed, we're going to start primary site work. And that includes finished grading, laying down base rock for sidewalks, putting irrigation lines. We've, like I said, we've already started putting the little site retaining walls in. So as the weather gets better, we're going to see a lot more site work taking place. Again, our, a lot of our focus right now is in move-in operations and maintenance. Furniture scope, purchasing is in progress. All the furniture for Building E All the furniture for Building E is now either in place or is, is being delivered, like I said, next week. So we're pretty much done with that. The security, audiovisual, data and telecoms purchasing is in progress. We've delivered to the site. We have the CAT six A cable, which was a change we'd made along with wireless access points, security cameras. All the data switches have all been, started delivering to the site. So those are now starting, going to be installed, starting, are going to start being installed in the buildings. Move planning coordination is well underway. I think I reported last month, we had two meetings about a month ago with both at Annie Yates and at, and at the Emery Secondary School site to talk, to introduce our team to the teachers, faculty and staff and talk about move, move planning. We are now underway with a series, with a series of meetings with each teacher to talk about their particular move and when that's taking place. So far, that's, our views has gone, gone really quite well. We're procuring the actual mover. That's the actual moving company that's going to move everything. Building Systems Commission and Training. We started with a sort of a mini commission and training for Building E along with both city and, and district maintenance staff to show them how to use the systems and, and get that up and running. We have a monthly programming meeting, which we actually just had this, just right before the board meeting, where the city and district staff talk about how we're going to share the use. Most of that's about the gym, the gym facility now. But we, we started today to talk about how we're going to use Building A and other facilities. So that takes place every month. We also have an operation maintenance building with, with maintenance staff to coordinate maintenance of, of the facility. That's also monthly as well. And finally, every, every week Turner's Site Safety Officer does a full walk. At our weekly construction meetings, we have a discussion to make sure that we have site safety and security because we have an occupied site now. We've had an occupied site for two months with the gym being used along with construction underway. So we're very, there's a heightened awareness to make sure that the public, the, the safety of the public is of course the primary importance. And as we occupy other parts of the, of the facility, we'll be, be looking at that very carefully as well. So that's my update for this month, for the ECL, the ECL monthly update.
Any further questions for Mr. Baker?
So again, I missed the eight-week look ahead. So we have a date looming, June first, where it gets very expensive if we're not in. And I heard you mention that there's a plan in place to use Building A for temporary high school. Did I hear that correctly?
No, that we, we actually, I, I, the, the, the thought that's been taking place is that for high school occupancy, there's the food services in Building C is in the K-38 school. So what do we do temporarily?
Got it.
So the plan is to use that small catering kitchen to, as a foods, as part of the food service facility for the high school.
Okay. And so I guess that's my big question with the date looming, are we going to make it?
So we, we had a, we had a, we had a, two what are called poll scheduling sessions with Turner to focus on the June first high school date and the late, late July K-38 school date. And they were actually very successful. We're going to get the actual electronic schedules tomorrow. But the, those, both of those plans show that we would make those dates. The wild card, of course, is weather. And so we're actually going to be going to the city council the first weekend, the first meeting in April, which is in a couple of weeks, to have a targeted plan for Saturday work for both Building D and Building C, kind of as an insurance policy against the weather. And so that, that way, we would, the idea is that we'd be able to pick up days at fairly nominal cost in order to give us, to pick up time if we get more rain, which is, you know, generally forecast. So that, that's, right now, it's looking like we'll hit those dates. The idea though is to mitigate against rain is to go and request, it's actually, you can do Saturday work in the city, but there's a noise waiver that we're being requested. We requested that for the, for the, for the gym. We're going to do another one for Building D, the high school, and Building C so we can pick up time if we're impacted by rain.
And just for the board's clarification, both the city staff and district staff and myself are asking Swinerton to make that request to the city.
Along with Turner Construction as well.
So I guess, and again, I'm just thinking June first has got to be when we're actually moved in. So you're saying completion will be done by May twentieth?
So we're looking at substantial completion the week before that and doing a move Memorial Day weekend.
Okay.
Other questions? Remember, Mary, me had some-
Yes, I do. Going back to your slide pertaining to the change order report. Looking at that, you know, the numbers look good on the surface. But my question pertains to, is this in comparison to lease-leaseback method versus a hard bid, basically a design bid build?
This is, this is looking at what's called CEM at Risk, which is essentially what lease-leaseback is. Where you, it, lease-leaseback is a, a variation of, CEM at Risk is where you have design assist, where you have the, where the builder is selected on board. And that's really the most relevant to this because of the way that the drawings are phased and how much knowledge the contractor has the drawings before. But most, almost every lease-leaseback project is CEM at Risk. So this is most relevant to a project of this type.
Okay, so both these numbers, most of these categories are pertaining to that, that delivery method?
Correct, for example, for, for hard bid jobs, you don't have contractor's contingency.
Kind of a side note or kind of an observation I made when I went through the tour the last couple of times. One thing in particular is that the elevator seems to be your Achilles' heel. And I walked through the site and I saw something in the elevator. And I, it struck me as kind of strange and maybe a, a kind of concern for code issue pertaining to, there's a sprinkler line that's in the, in the, in the elevator shaft in, I think it's Building B maybe. And my concern is that anytime you put any kind of mechanical or plumbing in a shaft, that's, that's cause for concern. And inspector with the elevator depart, State Department always, basically can shut the job down. I just want to make sure that that is addressed if there is any issue pertaining to code violation for that condition. It's just a concern because you'll be at the end and you're waiting for inspection and approval from the state elevator inspector. And you don't get it and you aren't certified to open that building. So that is a prime concern. Another one is just a minor thing. In the gymnasium, the locker room facility has a disabled access shower stall. And invariably, the installation of a corded or a hosed handheld wand is installed. And I guarantee you, in any type of school situation, they will be gone in the, in the first week that that is installed. I, it just, it just, it just pains me to see that installation in a public area that is just more, it just is, is a honing in on, on a vandalistic, mind you, it may not occur, but it's just something of a heads up on that. And then finally, this is on the entire campus, and I can't understand how it got passed. But we're using, and forgive me for the technical aspect of this, but where there's, it's called MC cabling. And it's how all the power is delivered to the building, to the rooms, to the lights. It's used throughout the building. And normally, in that case, is you have a conduit that wire is pulled. This type of wiring system that they provided and installed. And I've looked through the documents and it states that it should be installed conduit with, with wires within it, not the MC cabling, which is multi, metal clad, or metal clad cabling. And it's a lot easier to install the metal clad as the MC cabling. And I just want to know how that was approved, how that was dictated to be installed in this project. Because it's in a magnitude of over hundreds of thousands of dollars. It saved labor and materials. It's just, it pains me to see that.
Okay, so I'll respond to all three. The first item was the fire sprinkler line in the, in the elevator shafts. We discussed at the, at the job site today. DSK is looking into that. Like you say, the elevators are always an issue. The one advantage we have in Buildings B and C is our elevator completion is going to be kind of early. Building D, that's the critical path. So obviously, it's great concern. So DSK is looking into that issue. And, and we'll discuss it with the elevator subcontractor and who has a relationship with the state elevator inspector. And we'll look into that and can report back on that. I can't recall your second item, which was the, of the log, the, yeah, the-
The handheld, the wand and showers.
I'm not aware of another way to comply with ADA with that. It becomes really-
It's a two, it's a two nozzle system. It's a high-low. It's, it's used as an alternative, but it just, it diminishes the possibility of vandalism and having to come back and repair it at a future time.
We'll look at that also. I'm happy to report back on all this, all of these items. The, the third item, I, that, that, that decision was made before we commenced on the project. I will look into the history for that and understand what, 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 the, the history behind that decision. I believe that decision was made before our involvement in the project.
Because it's, it's, it's critical because it's what it's doing. It's pigeonholing us into any type of remodeling in the, down the road because you're, you can no longer pull electrical wiring to a spot within this, using existing pathway. You'll have to tear the walls open to reroute. It's, it's just a future concern, but it's a concern nonetheless.
I, you know, as, as somebody who runs a site, I have that same issue. We have the handles and we just keep them off unless we know we have a student who's going to need it. Because it, you're exactly right, it's going to be gone in five minutes. And in our new design for our shower remodel, we did the two, the two-head system.
That's something that I think it's not difficult to change out because there's a metal housing that goes there. We can probably change those out if we, if need be. We can certainly look into that.
Okay, other questions? Do you have any public comment on this item?
We just had, we just had an update on the construction of the ECL. And I'm going to give a personal update on the ECL and how it's affecting me as a current fifth-grade student at Annie Yates. I have, I am not going to participate in the ECL. I'm not going to enroll. And the application process for schools is not easy. And my friends are all going to go there. And I will pro, and none of my friend, none of my current friends will be going to my school next year. And they will all be going to this building. So it is important to me that they like it. And, and I'm, so that's why I'm here with the updates and trying to figure out how the ECL is working right now and the organization of it. Because I want my friends to be happy. And in class right now, we're doing an essay, pro or con, on the idea of the ECL, TK through twelve, twelfth grade, if that's a good idea, if that's a bad idea. And I chose the con side. And one of my reasons is that middle school and high school students are very different from K through fifth because they're going through different things. And they sometimes use bad language. And if any of the littler kids hear that, they might decide it's okay to use that language. And so it just, the older kids just might not be a good influence on them. And so it might not be, I don't think it's a very good idea to have them in such tight spaces together. I know that they'll be in different buildings, but they're still on the same campus. And right now at Annie Yates, the older kids and littler kids are very close. And it's probably, it might be that way in the ECL too. So that's one of my concerns. Also, it's, it's fourteen different grades in ages for TK through twelfth grade on a campus where just a high school, four grades used to be. So that also concerns me. I don't want kids there to feel like they're crammed or if they don't have space. So that also concerns me. And I just want you to know that it sometimes upsets me that I will not be going here. But I'm glad, I'm glad as well. And that's what I have to say.
Thank you, Cora. We're very sorry to lose you. Appreciate very much your ability to come in and talk to us. Other public comment?
Hi, I'm Brian Carver, an Emeryville resident. I wasn't planning on coming tonight, but my daughter insisted that she wanted to speak and didn't tell me what she had in mind to say, but it was important to her, so it came out. I think when I watch the progress of the ECL, I guess what I am concerned about is sort of the loss of memory. So many people who have been involved in this project have moved on. Sometimes that's been for the best. But I see decisions that got made that when I sat in meetings, you know, six years ago, that now no one seems to recall, right? Like for instance, I got a chance to go to the new gym and watch the high schoolers play basketball. That was awesome. They're, they're really good this year. But I was surprised actually to see ECL emblazoned on the bleachers and to see Spartans, you know, on the, painted onto the floor in a way that would be hard to change. Because I sat at a city school meeting a couple of years back where it was decided that the students would get to choose the mascot at, at the ECL and that they would get to vote on this. And, you know, a lot of the Annie Yates Lions have an attachment to that mascot. And it feels like people have forgotten, right? That those decisions were made at prior meetings because there's been so much turnover in this project over the years. And, and even the name ECL was actually discussed as being up for potential change once, once we got further along in the process. Many people thought that the high school should have a distinctive name that sounded like a high school, right? You know, that that would be important to those students, to be able to say that they went to, you know, whatever they chose. That was actually the idea, is that we'd be able to discuss that at, at the time. And, and we've, we've lost that memory. So the Walhalla that we discussed earlier, I sat in a planning commission meeting where parents complained about it looking like a hamster cage for kids, right? And where I think if you, if you talk to our current Public Works Director about his experience at the Doyle Hollis Park, which uses equipment purchased from Europe, we've had a terrible time getting replacement parts for, for that equipment. It's, I'm on the Parks and Rec Committee. And so we, we hear about, you know, if, if one thing breaks on a piece of equipment, you have to shut it completely down. And then if replacement takes months, you know, you could, you guys could go a whole semester with this piece of equipment out of commission if you have a similar experience. So anyway, being in meetings like this over the years and feeling like progress was made and then having the same issues come back up with no memory of the-
We're out of time.
The prior decisions, it's really frustrating.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right, this is not an action item, was an information update. So we're on to the next item on the agenda.
Thank you. Next item we have is Mr. Baker again, to six point three for approval to off-haul footing and utility schools as Class Two waste at an additional cost. Mr. Baker?
Okay, this item, soil off-haul, this has actually been included in the project budget for over a year. This has been a matter of finalizing costs, reviewing hundreds of time cards and, and manifests. And so this is coming forth to the, the final approval for the change order. This was soil off-haul for foundation and utility work when we had a trench through the site. There was some change in scope due to the resequencing of utilities due to the unforeseen eastbound mud pipe in San Pablo, where we changed some things around so we could build the buildings first and put the utilities in later. There was some redesign required by City Public Works that required more excavation. So I would say probably about ten percent of this is more excavation than had have been originally included. The primary- probably about 10% of this is more excavation than had been originally included. The primary issue is that the analytical testing required disposal as a Class II landfill. If you recall, we'd been through a large soil remediation exercise in the site about two years ago. Until you do this dig for the foundations and the utilities and test the soil, you know, you don't determine where it goes to. Also, another aspect of this, that soil was to be used as backfill for the retaining walls. So we have to haul that soil off and then also import a small amount of soil, though it was probably only about 5% of the total soil. Swinburne has reviewed in great detail, final documentation of time and material tags for all this work. It's about a book about that thick. Again, this has been included in the project budget. This is the finalization of the cost for this, which is $118,858. And I might add, the reason why we're giving this as a board item is because it exceeds the $87,000 threshold for ratification list.
And if it weren't approved, the consequences, there's a bunch of contaminated soil sitting on the site?
What this is is-
Or what? There's an alternative, hold on, is there, is an alternative option if we didn't approve this?
Apologies for the interruption. Unfortunately, no, this is regulated by the DTSC, the Department of State, the State Department of Toxic Substances Control, and specifically in regard to K through 12 schools. So the way that this work is authorized through the contract documents is to authorize the work and have it, have it removed. But we don't pay for it until we verify all the costs. So this was the cost verification exercise.
So it has been off-hauled already?
Correct. It was off-hauled as it occurred.
Yeah.
So we've already incurred the expense, as it were. All right. Other questions?
Okay. Any public comment on this item? Did you have a question, Member Ash? Okay. Any public comment on this item? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
So moved.
I will second.
Roll call, please.
Member Ash?
Yes.
Member Collins Rogers?
Yes.
Member Marion?
Yes.
Member Pats?
Yes.
President Affleck?
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. We're on to item 6.4.
Yes, this is a request for approval to waive the withholding of 5% retention for the remainder of the project. The board may have some questions for Mr. Baker. This one took me quite a few minutes to get clear on, Mr. Baker. I think I understand it now. Maybe you'd like to take a stab at just explaining it in general for the board?
On behalf of the Illuminate further. So retention in construction is when you withhold a percentage of the cost of the work that's been put in place. And you withhold that for the purpose of being able to complete, basically it allows you to withhold payment until the job's completed. And commonly, when you use retention, it's not commonly actually needed to be used. But if a contractor, if a subcontractor doesn't show up, or a contractor refuses to do work or doesn't do work, which happens not very commonly. As of March 1st, the ECL is exactly two-thirds complete, will be actually 75% complete at the end of this month. And $2.1 million of retention is withheld. That means work has been put in place that we've not paid Turner Construction for in the matter of $2 million. The lease-leaseback agreement allows retention withholding to stop, allows the board to approve ceasing to retain those dollars once ECL is 50% complete. Turner Construction has issued a request, as per the conditions of the lease-leaseback agreement, to no longer hold retention for the remainder of the project. That $2.1 million would still be in place, just the last third of the project. Early retention release, which is, this is basically the equivalent of that, it's very common in construction projects, once you get towards the end, to release portions of retention primarily for subcontractors who have finished their work. Once their work is done and in place, really, the idea is, once they've completed that, why would you need to hold retention? So it's pretty commonly done. The lease-leaseback agreement is a bit different than others, where others allow you to release portions of retention. This contractor does not allow you to release the 50% at all, but it allows you to discretionally release any portion of the last 50%. It's common on projects where subcontractors perform well. It also typically has a positive impact on subcontractor performance. If you say, once you stop that, or once you do early retention release, which this is equivalent in concept to, subs tend to be more productive. They tend to answer your request to do Saturday work, things of that nature. It can be quite a motivating factor. I would say it's common on projects, I will say this, in my 30 years of doing this, the subcontractors have performed excellent work on this project. We've had no subcontractor issues, we really haven't at all. They perform very well. We view that we've got $2.1 million. There's been no work at all that's not been completed, or that has been completed poorly, that's needed to be redone. We've had some soil compaction that doesn't pass, test, minor stuff to recompact that. That's the only thing that's comes to my mind. But they really, Turner's forces in terms of completing work in the field have done an excellent job. So our recommendation, because we view that really this is a positive benefit to the project because it motivates the contractors that are there. Again, the only reason you have retention is for work that's not completed, where they don't finish something. We still have $2 million of leverage for that kind of work. That really is, should be more than enough to have in our backpocket and withhold in order to force them to complete work. There's no indication that they're not going to complete any work. There's been no, there have been no subcontractors who have not performed, or defaulted, or have gone out of business. So we view this as a positive, truly believe this is positive for the project, and recommend that we, as of March 1st, we would cease withholding retention for the remainder of the project under the terms stipulated in the lease-leaseback agreement.
So if I heard you correctly, if we don't do this, the subcontractors aren't going to work very hard?
That is not what I said. That's not correct. It can act as an incentive to have them, help them cross the finish line. We release retention, they can pay their vendors off. Any retention they've been holding from their vendors, they pay those guys off. If there are any vendor subcontractor disputes, which we're kind of two tiers removed from, it avoids them issuing stop notices if they've got a dispute to, which go to the owner, which then we have to manage. It helps mitigate those sorts of things between subs and vendors that may occur. Again, on successful projects, which this is, certainly falls in that category, it's not uncommon to do an early retention release. This is the mechanism of the lease-leaseback agreement where you do something equivalent to that.
You said 50%, 50%, talking about the contract. But the 67% is how far we're at-
We're doing this-
Right now that-
(laughing)
Since we're at 67%, the proposal is not to undo any of the retention to date up to and including 67%, only going forward. Is that right?
That is correct.
Okay.
Well, it's going back to the first of this month. It's not going forward. It actually goes back 23 days.
It goes back, it would be this pay application, which is the month of March, which we've not yet received. It would include the month of, it would start, it would be for, starting May, March 1st is when that would occur. But that, the March 1st is the 67% point, the two-thirds point. This could have been requested or agreed to at the 50% point. Turner's requested at the 67% point.
And the 2.1, is that the contingency? Or is that, that's just a separate pot that's retention to make sure that the contractor and subcontractors do their work?
It is. That work has been completed. We have not paid Turner for that work. And they have not paid their subcontractors for that work.
Have we checked to see if it's all been completed satisfactorily, or is that part of some final checkoff?
We have already done so. When you do a monthly pay application, you do, what you're approving is the amount of work put in place, and you're withholding 5% of that amount. You're short, basically not paying them for the work that's been, 5%. You're paying 95% for the work that's been completed and verified.
Okay. So the, I guess, when do we turn over the 2.1 million if we're fully satisfied?
That's turnover at final completion, which is the last milestone. There are two milestones for each part of the project. Substantial completion is when you can occupy. So for example, the gym, we have substantial completion now. Final completion is when you get all your paperwork in and all the documentation. So that's only at the very end, end, end of the project. So sometime in September, probably when we get all the as-built documents, owner operations and maintenance manuals, we've completed the punch list, all the building's been properly commissioned. Only at that point do we release that amount.
Okay. And that, that is the plan? You're not going to come back in a month and say, now we want to release some of the 67%? No, we're going to-
No.
-not even-
Correct.
-do that till final.
Correct.
So my last question is, the 2.1 million, can we use that as leverage if we're not satisfied with a contractor or subcontractor effort on the remaining part of the contract going forward? So in other words, they don't do what they're supposed to do when they're supposed to do it, you know, as of what they agreed to, even though we weren't holding the 5% pertaining to that work, we paid the, but we can still use our 2.1 to say, you're not getting that till you finish?
Correct. The way this usually works, first off, we don't pay anything, one dime, until the work's been completed for any part of the project. So that's never even paid. And then even then, we only pay them 95%. So there's two things. Number one is, if they don't do their work, we don't pay them. Typically, what this is, what this money, in fact, I, quite frankly, I've never really used it. You use it, I've only used it at the end of a job when there's some element of the project that for some reason you don't want to do yet. If there's a regulatory issue, or if you want to leave a part of the work out because you want to make a change of the project, and in which case, public contract code allows you to withhold 125% of the value of the work left. So you kind of have retention in case there's any of that. So there's sort of two things. Number one, if a contractor, if there's no work, we only pay Turner when the work actually is in place, when it physically exists. We don't pay them until the work is completed, which is an important concept in construction. There's no deposits or paint upfront or any of that. So that's number one. This does provide us leverage, though. If some subcontractor should, let's say that, I mean, what we have left primarily are sidewalks and landscape and interior finishes, stucco work at Building C. If one of those subs should not, should not show up, it would give us leverage with Turner to make that be so. I want to be clear about this, is that although Turner's made the request because the contract requires them to do that, we're recommending this as a benefit to the project because it does, it shows good faith. It really helps with, you'll have, this is the kind of thing you put, you do so that the painters show up on a Saturday to paint at their cost to get ahead, things of that nature. So it typically is, even though it's only 5%, it kind of, it means a lot to, especially the sub, the second and third, the second and third tier subs, they're actually doing the work in the field.
That's helpful. Thanks.
So, go ahead.
Pertaining to the typical 5% that you're talking about, what's your take on, or what's your experience been with other contracts where a 10% retention is normally held, and then at a time it was reduced to 5%? So it sounds like we're working from a disadvantage already and moving to a zero point from this time on. It just seems kind of out of the ordinary that you have 5% retention built into the, into the contract and where normal or other contracts have been 10%. So that's kind of a strange assessment that I've come across.
Unfortunately, public contract, California Public Contract Code has not allowed anything more than 5% retention since 2013. So no longer, you no longer have 10% retention on any public projects. So what you have is 5%. And so basically, what we're saying here is we're withholding about 3.5% total because that last one and a half percent's not there. What's commonly done, what used to be 10% is you go from 10% to 5, or what's done in other countries, you actually release retention. Like, we'd say, we've had 2 million, we're going to take, we'll release $1 million of it and give that back to you. That's, most contracts have what's called early retention release. The lease-leaseback agreement is a little bit different, where it has a milestone. Once you, once you do that, you can elect, it's always the owner who can elect to do it. The board could certainly say, vote no on this and not do that for that extra million dollars they would have at the end of the project. That's certainly your prerogative to do so. Our recommendation is, is that, given the way that they've performed, especially the subs have performed, we think there's a benefit to doing that. Otherwise, we would not be recommending it. We just would have told Turner, no.
So a lot of this, it seems to me that it's Turner who we need to motivate. I don't really, if a sub doesn't do their job, the sub isn't contracted with the district, they're contracted with Turner, correct?
Correct.
So that's really all on Turner. That's not our issue. It's Turner's problem. That's why we pay Turner the large percentage we pay them to get the subs. Correct?
The way that the contracts work is that the retention is a pass-through. It can be that a contractor would release that retention on their own. That has been done before. Typically, though, they withheld that amount from their subcontractors. So when they, in fact, when we see the bill, it's billed per subcontractor, and they have a lien release that follows that shows what that amount is. And so we would then see them paying that subcontractor. And again, the subcontractors perform the work. Turner is basically managing the construction. So we will see, those dollars will go to the subcontractors. 90% of the dollars on this project go to subcontractors, not to Turner.
Right. That 10% is where, that 10% is our leverage because Turner's the one who's going to make sure things are complete on time and on budget, which, again, you've defined success very differently than I do. I would like to have seen things done on time and on budget, and I have not gotten the impression that that's happened. You know, I think the gym is the perfect example. It was very late. And I know, there was a pipe in the street. I've heard it. But to me, I feel like, at this point, we have some really critical deadlines. And the more leverage we have, you know, $2 million is not a lot to Turner. And that's whose arm I need a twist. I'm not so worried about the subs. Turner has to make sure this is done on time. I mean, our kids are going to be, I'm just thinking about the high school students, they're going to get very little education after Memorial Day based on this schedule. And a day or two later than that, I mean, you know, teachers are struggling to keep their attention and to have them move and expect to get, and we have six days of school left at that point. You know, I want as much leverage as I can to make sure that, you know, this really late date of movement happens. And I don't want to give any of it away. And so I guess that's my big question is, is that enough of a motivator for Turner to get it done on time?
One clarification is that we've withheld 2 million so far. This will be the last of 1 million that we would not withhold. So 1 million is the amount of dollars in question. And all I can tell you, Mr. Pats, is that my, at this, when this type of, this type of project, this juncture, when we are pushing them really hard to get things on schedule, to finish on schedule, is that this will, our professional opinion is that this will help motivate them more than withholding it.
Yeah. And I have to say, my faith in that has waned. So, okay.
May I ask a clarifying question to make sure I understand Mr. Baker as well? So this is work that subcontractors have done already, and they have not been paid that final 5%. Is that correct?
That is not correct.
Oh, that's not correct.
So up till two-thirds, let's use March 1st as a deadline, up through March 1st, we've paid everyone, Turner and all their subcontractors, 95% of the cost of the work they've put in place. We're not, that's not going to change. For the last third, 33% of the project, we would pay them for 100% of the work that they've completed. We never pay one-
Only after they completed it?
Nothing, no, not one penny is paid to anyone until the work has been completed.
And doing that at this point in a project, does that give us some leverage? I know, I know your opinion already that it doesn't give us, it's not beneficial, I think, but-
I'm not sure leverage, it's not, retention's not intended for leverage. Retention is reserved in case work is not completed, so you can withhold, you can withhold payment. If they, if a subcontractor, if a subcontractor finishes, let's say they have a million-dollar contract, and they finish 90% of the job and they walk away, and they haven't finished 100%, 100, 100, $100,000, you withhold some money that they can't get until they come back and finish. So it's an insurance policy against work not being completed. It's not a leverage per se, if that helps. It helps, it's leverage if a subcontractor walks off the job. if, if a subcontractor walks off the job.
And, Mr. Baker, you might want to clarify that. The fact is that if work is complete, they do get a percentage of that. You don't hold everything until the job is done. It's just, when the job, when the, let's say, for example, your site work, your site grading or whatever is done, you, and it's, let's say, $100,000 for sake of discussion, $90,000 or $95,000 has been paid to that contractor. The 5 percent is what's left over.
Correct.
Because that, that, that activity occurred way, way early on. It wasn't where we held money back until the project is complete and paid the whole thing. It's when the project, and that's when they submit a percentage of completion on their, on their monthly application.
Correct. You, the money's withheld until the very, very, very end of the project.
Just the only the small portion.
Correct.
So just to clarify a little bit, you're saying that if we release this retention for the 5 percent, that it will have a positive impact on work that they're already supposed to be doing?
So, again, what we're saying is, for the last third of the project, we would not withhold that 5 percent. And it's work there to do, but it commonly has a positive effect of, tell you what, we'll release retention, they're going, they will volunteer to work Saturdays, they'll do things like that. It will, our professional opinion is, it will help motivate them to finish, go the, the final mile. If they, it'll, they'll typically volunteer to work Saturdays, put extra shifts on. It'll help us attain those, those deadlines better. So that's the positive. The negative is some, some risk we've not seen that might happen in the future, that we still have $2 million for. We'll have that 2 million instead of 3 million.
So could the board, if they, could, could the board change this to a, from, moving from a 95, excuse me, 95 percent pay rate to 98 percent at this point in the project, instead of 100?
It, it, the way the contract language is written, it doesn't really, it basically says you can, what you, what the board could do, is that in another, in a month, we could go back to withholding retention, per outside counsel. That's how they reviewed this. So if we saw some kind of sign in a month, we wanted to revert to this, we could do that. The effect of it, it depends on the trade, because trades that are already done, we've got that retention. Trades that haven't done work yet, they wouldn't have that retention. Turner could, at their discretion, they could give some of that retention, withhold it from the subs that's still doing work, and, and, and give it to subs who are off the job. They're not going to do that. They, they, their, their rationale is it will help motivate the subs, who they're now cracking the whip, to finish things on time. That it tends to be a motivating factor, because that money's in their pockets. Really, they don't have to wait till the end of the job. Otherwise, they don't have to wait till September to receive it.
Not if they finish early and on time.
Well, the way that the contract works, though, is we can't, we, we, the retention we've already withheld, we're not going to release that until final completion of the project, which would be about two months after they finish, which will be in September, once they get all their documentation.
But again, it, yeah, I, your economic theory and my economic theory seem to be different. I, I feel like the, the ones who are done are done, so there's no motivation there. And the ones who haven't started are the ones who will benefit from this. And it seems to me, well, that's not, who need, those are the one, I don't know, you, I, you say it both ways. You sort of say, "Hey, this will motivate them," but there's no consequence if they don't finish on time and we release these funds. So, I don't know. It just seems to me that this is in the advantage of Turner, once again, and not in the district's. So, but that's for discussion.
I think you said, 90 percent of this is subcontractor money?
About 90 percent of the value of the contractors are subcontractors. Turner's not self-performing work. The, there, what, there's-
90 percent of the million dollars we're talking about, is that subcontractor money?
That's subcontract, 90 percent of it is subcontractor money.
Okay. All right. And, and how many of those are new people who are, you know, only coming to the project between now and, and the end of the project? And how many are ongoing subcontractors who are, you know?
The majority are ongoing. I mean, most, most we've got left, we have, you know, some exterior, Building C exterior. We have mostly interior finishes, casework doors, hardwares, things like that, tile. They've been on the job. The subs have been on the job. The only new subs really are going to be landscape contractors, who have not been out to do irrigation and landscaping. We've done some sidewalk work. I, I don't, only a handful have not been to the site yet.
I just have a concern. You mentioned specific contractors or subcontractors. One in particular is the Spores Field. And with that is a, basically a complete package. And if we lose any leverage on that, that's a disaster in waiting. Another thing, too, is a concern that I brought up earlier, in an earlier point pertaining to the electrical. And if that isn't addressed, we don't have leverage in that aspect if we release retention there. So those are the types of things that we'll use retention for, because of performance of, of work or lack of performance. So I just want to put that out there for, for sake of discussion.
Any other questions? Do we have any public comment on this item? Okay, let's go to discussion. Member Mary, a question for you, with your extensive experience building schools. What, albeit, it's now 5 percent, not 10 percent.
Yes.
But what's been the practice that you've seen in, in, if there is a common practice with respect to-
Based, based on the schedule of this project, or the magnitude of this project, there have, there would be sometimes retention release, in that sense, or early retention. I've seen it 50-50, but it, since the durability-
You've seen it 50 percent of the time, or you've seen it happen at 50 percent of completion of projects?
No, 50 percent of the time that it occurs. Not 50 percent of the project, but 50 percent of the time, half and half, you'd have retention release. Other times, contractors didn't ask for it. But since this is a lease-leaseback delivery method, or CM@Risk method, it's a little different animal. But I would, I would have reservations of releasing that, just because it is a, is a carrot and a stick approach. And if we lose control of, of the carrot, you know, we'd have the stick and that's it. So I'm hesitant to recommend or suggest that we go this route.
Other discussion?
Incidentally, I would agree that about 50 percent of the time is probably how you do it. And you tend to do it when contractors doing a good job, which our view is Turner is. You typically do it when they're not, you typically don't. But about halftime, halftime is what you do.
Any other discussion points? Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm kind of on the fence on this. The, I think I was the first one to mention leverage, but it does, it, 90 percent of it's going to subcontractors and sub-subcontractors. And I, I don't think we have a timing issue with them, or leverage with them. And the other piece is that it, it's only going to get paid to them once they've actually done the work and they've done what we asked them to do. So, to the extent we need any leverage, it seems 2.1 million is, is pretty good. And that's not going away till the end of the project. So that, the, yeah. On the other hand, you know, it's, the, the practice to date has been, hold on to that 5 percent, and, you know, you can't predict the future, so it seems conservative to hold on to 5 percent. So I, you know, I, as I say, I'm, it's kind of on the fence. Any other public comments before we call the vote? All right, well, I'll make a motion to, to just get it going and see where we're at. I move approval to accept a staff recommendation to release the 5 percent retention for the remainder of the project. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Can we have a roll call, please?
Member Ash?
Yes.
Member Collins Rogers?
No.
Member Marion?
No.
Member Pats?
No.
President Affleck?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go no, too. All right? And we'll, you know-
And we can revisit this in future months.
Absolutely. We can reconsider this if, if that seems appropriate.
Sure.
According to the stat. All right, we're on to item 6.5, approval of the 2016-17 academic calendar.
Yes. Good evening. Again, the purpose of this item is for the board to consider approval of our academic calendar for the 2016-17 school year. There was a lot of work on this last month here with the full cabinet, as well as multiple conversations with Ms. Turner, the president of the teachers' union. And so we wanted to make sure we brought this to you for your approval.
Are there, are there any questions on the academic calendar?
So I am looking at October the 14th, which is a Friday. It does say that it is staff PD, no school for students. Is there any way that that can be, you know, pushed to a, another day, or to a minimal day, like a Wednesday, when the, the students get out on an earlier schedule? Give or take, if they will have that same schedule for the ECCL use facility as well?
Member Collins Rogers, would you mind just elaborating, just so I understand the rationale for your request, just so I-
Right. So, the 14th is a Friday. Why would there be no school for students the second week of October? Give or take, that would be a month or two into their school year. Why is there a reason for students to not have attendance in school on that particular day?
Typically, what we, what we try to do every year is, we do our best to have some, a couple of days, sometimes it's two days upfront in August before the school year starts, for professional development. It's usually never enough time, to be quite honest with you. We really should have a day almost every month for at least five or six months, where, where we do something similar, October 14th, in my opinion. We don't do that. Teachers really tend to want and, and can use the professional development if it's well done. So that, that day is there, because, you know, we are required to have 184 days, excuse me, 180 days of instruction. And so the thought, I believe, by the cabinet and the director of instruction and myself, was that after school has settled in, and the teachers have, things moving along well, back-to-school night has happened, that, that would afford us the opportunity to have one additional professional development day, which would be a full day of professional development. We wouldn't be able to accomplish, you know, that usually in a Wednesday afternoon, maybe multiple Wednesdays, but there is some benefit to us to have that full day. Again, well, last year, I think, actually, that was two falls back, in 2014, 15, we had, I believe, three to five days, where the city opened their recreation center for students and families, while we had Common Core training for teachers. And this year's a little tricky because of the move to the new facility. There, there really isn't as much available time, if we're going to be respectful to the teachers on the front end, to do professional development. So that was part of the thinking also.
Other questions?
So you're going to make sure that REC has staffing that day?
Oh, yes.
And maybe Head Over Heels will be open or for business? Okay. All the blue days are, let's say, CSEA holidays. Those are also school holidays, right?
Ah, yes, I believe that's correct.
Yes, my, my one question was the, the earlier start in August caught me by surprise. We usually start the last, or second to last week of August. So I would have, I, if I, before I saw this, I assumed that we'd start school the 22nd, or maybe even the 29th. But to be starting the 18th and a Thursday in the middle of a week, and you've got camps that kind of get scheduled, you know, a week at a time when you're, when you're a parent, is, it's kind of inconvenient.
Right. The, the first day, just remember, Affleck, is not the 18th, it's the 25th.
Okay, so it's gray. They, that's when teachers come in.
Yeah, it's per, kind of-
Well, same thi, it's, it's the same point, then. I, I was expecting that we'd start the last week, the week before Labor Day. That's when we typically start it.
Yeah, that Monday.
Which would be Monday, the 29th.
And we, we-
And this year, you know, for example, we're, we're going to that third week in June, like the June 16th, I believe, is the last day of school this year. And so if we'd been doing what we've done the last few years, we would have, you know, those two days picked up in June, I guess, at the end of the year, instead of starting, anyway, was it? What was the thinking to switch that up?
I don't, I don't know, you know, that there was particular, an intent to begin on a Thursday, to be quite honest. Because of the, you know, the number of days and making sure it works on the calendar, and trying to finish on, on a Friday, and not going to that fourth week of June, on the 19th and 20th, and having one professional development day-
No, you'd be in the, you'd be in the third week, the 12th and the 13th.
The last student day-
So don't follow the gray. It'll just confuse you.
Oh, okay.
You gotta look in the column next to it. The gray is off everywhere.
I'm sorry, the gray. I just, I actually noticed the gray is off in June.
It's June. Now, now I'm messed up, yeah.
So the-
What am I, so what am I looking at?
The gray is off in June. I'm sorry, I just noticed. Thank you, Member Pats.
Last day is 15.
Last day for students, right.
Yeah, so it is 15.
Or, well, let's see.
Last student day is the 15th, last teacher day is the 16th.
Right.
So that, so that's commensurate, more or less, with this year.
That's correct.
So, one of the-
So let's fix the gray, whatever.
Yeah, yeah, sorry.
But definitely, the first day, having the first day on the 18th, 19th, or, I'm sorry, the 25th, 26th.
So, from a teacher and administrator perspective, those first two days of school are when you get the, the, the real counts, and you end up doing a lot of balancing over that weekend. And so I can say, as both a teacher and administrator, I've appreciated having that time to go back. You know, I mean, teachers don't work Monday through Friday. They work all week long. And I think Mr. Rubio will attest that. I don't think he's had a day off since he got the job. And so the idea is that you have two days, you get a real head count of actual students, and then you spend that weekend. For the high school kids, adjusting schedules, and for the elementary, it's balancing class loads. And so that, that's one of the real advantages, and why teachers sort of shoot for that two-day, or it's usually one or two days before the start of school. I know it's inconvenient for parents, but for a, a school, you need the, that weekend break to really fix, because who shows up versus who's registered is very different. Am I, would you attest to that? I see two nods from people who've had that first week chaos. You know, and the, and for the kids, it also is very nice, because it eases them in.
I was going to say, it eases the adults in, also, to be honest.
Yeah, well, the adults are going to be panicked from the move, so.
Superintendent, yeah, I'm sorry.
No.
No, you're done.
I'm done, yeah.
Yeah, can you elaborate on that?
Well, there, there is, in my, in my mind, there, there's a, there's a slight benefit for teachers to have those upfront days, that part of the week, as part of their continual setup, some orientation to the new site. And, and certainly, after having two full days of instruction, to be able to, as a teacher, to regroup, breathe a little, you've gotten to know your students, or you've got issues you need to resolve with the, with administration around schedules. And then you have your weekend, and, and then you have one full week before, a three-day weekend. So there's some benefit in that respect for teachers to, sort of, as Member Pats was referring to, easing themselves into the beginning of, of the school year, and maybe for students as well.
Other comments or questions?
And then just to, just to explain the green for CSEA holidays. And then just to, just to explain the green for CSEA holidays, uh, the way the contracts work, holidays are just non-
Blue is CSEA.
Blue, sorry. Holidays are just non-days for teachers and administrators, they're just work days, they don't work. But for CSEA, holidays are, count as work days, and so their contract usually is, what, one ninety-six or something, because you have to count all the holidays in. So they are, so it's very good that you have it identified as, you know, like, the day out, the day before Thanksgiving is a CSEA holiday in this district. And that's good, because it counts on their calendar.
Yeah. I guess my comment was really, um, had to do with our legend, to be clear, because I consult this all the time throughout the year.
Mm-hmm.
And, and, it, it would should say, CSCA holiday and school closed, so that it just, you know, I think if you look at it and you see things in Christmas, and then you figure it out, but-
Oh, I see, because red says school closed, right.
You know, it's not, yeah, and they seem to fall in line. But, yeah, it doesn't necessarily say school's closed for-
Okay.
Coming to.
And then for, um, August eighteenth, as well as the nineteenth, I'm reading that it does say, um, that's a K through A setup day. Looking at the bigger picture, would it be a K through twelve setup day?
Well, it may not be, because, um, right now, and again, you're crossing my fingers about the rain, if our, if our high school completion date ends up being, uh, the third week in May, and we can do Memorial Day weekend move-in, the high school teachers will be setting up over, uh, potentially over a weekend, and receiving some compensation for that. So this would, in that scenario, that we believe is going to play out, be primarily for the K A teachers on those two days. Now, there is contract language, I'll just give you a little more information, there is contract language, that when teachers are required to move during the year, or in between school years, that they're entitled to, uh, not participate on the two days prior, which would, in our, in this case, be the twenty-third and twenty-fourth. We've come to an agreement with the teachers' union that they would, that that language would not apply, in lieu of us allowing them to receive up to thirteen hours of compensation over two days, whether that's a weekend for high school teachers, or these two days for K A teachers, the eighteenth and nineteenth. Because it was in our interest, and my interests with staff, that, uh, we don't have teachers opting out of the twenty-third or twenty-fourth, which the contract would technically allow, because we want them there, we want to make sure we go over safety, exit plans, security, you know, where everything is, the facility, and those kinds of things. So, um, that agreement is in the background of, of some of those days that are shaped, particularly the eighteenth and nineteenth.
Okay, any, any further questions before we open this? Yeah.
Is the minimum day going to continue on Wednesdays?
Is the minimum day going to continue on Wednesday?
Well, it used to be Thursday.
Uh, you, well, it used to be different at both school sites, I think, I think, I think that, right, I think that the, I forget which was which. High school, yeah, I forgot, but now they're both currently Wednesday, I believe, if I have it right in my head. And so that is going to, there's no plan change, that it's going to continue to be the same as it is right now.
Okay, any public comment on this item? Any, uh, discussion? Okay, do we have a, a motion?
So moved.
A second.
A roll call, please.
Member Ash?
Yes.
Member Collins Rogers?
Yes.
Member Marion?
Yes.
Member Patz?
Yes.
President F L?
Yes. All right, we're on to our last, uh, discussion item of the evening, item six point six, superintendent?
Uh, yes, uh, thank you. This is a, a follow-up item to the March twelfth study session. Attached in the packet are the notes that came out of the different parent groups that were there. Um, I'm bringing this to you this evening, uh, to, to propose, uh, an idea regarding this. I'd like to propose that I pull out the themes to document, uh, the responses, but that they're reorganized in group, and that I bring back my proposed responses to where there are questions, uh, to our next board meeting, to discuss and determine if my responses are the, the correct ones that the board agrees with, uh, so that we have an official record of the meeting, the notes, and, uh, my responses for the community and the board. I wasn't able to reorganize them and do that before, before tonight.
Understood. Thoughts or questions about superintendent's proposal? Yeah, I mean, I, I think, I think the, the spirit of what I'm hearing you recommend is that you come back, identify, you know, what some of the pros and cons that, that were identified, and, you know, propose, um, uh, you know, a response from the board that you would propose, and that, that we discuss the various, you know, key, key responses in there, and, and decide if, you know, there's support and agreement with respect to those. But I do, you know, I think the, what we told folks is that the board would come back and respond to the concerns and positives that people raised about, uh, ECCL and, and our Annie Yates configuration plans for the coming year. And I think this, this relates back to the opening discussion we had of, of having a forum, uh, in which, um, you know, we can, you know, present, uh, and, you know, be clear in deciding what our options are for moving forward.
That, that's correct, absolutely. I'm sorry, I was going to add something, but I think, I think I lost it, yes, that's correct. That was, that was the intent, to bring back the responses, see if my responses are the ones the board agrees with, uh, before we solidify those for the community.
Okay. Any, any public comment on this? Seeing none. It sounds like you, we don't need formal action, but you have direction?
Uh, yeah, I was just looking for direction, so that sounds, sounds like a game plan, I'll bring these, reorganize, bring these back.
All right, so we'll see these in, in April. Board announcements, board reports?
I do know that the high school students have a talent show tomorrow, and so they will not be attending, I believe, don't quote me on this, sixth period, um, tomorrow, so if anyone wants to go, go see how much talent our Emory High School students have.
At the high school?
Mm-hmm.
All right. Okay, any other reports or announcements?
Minor one, or not a minor one, but, uh, I, I want to give props to both the boys and girls' basketball team this year for their achievement within state tournament. There was, uh, uh, being a newer resident of Emory, but I've kind of learned over the years now that Emory has had a rich tradition in, and especially basketball, has been very, very successful, so I really want to wish them well for the future, and I'm really, really, really proud of the teams, uh, and their progress and their, their reward.
We're here, okay. All right. You want to go over the calendar review, superintendent?
Yes. Coming up, we have, oops, I'm sorry. I lost track of that item. I thought, I thought it was on the front. Sorry, I thought that was on my front, my packet.
I can do it, real quick, if you-
Thank you, if you want, thank you.
Yeah, so, spring break is, uh, starting on Monday, March twenty-fifth through April first, no school for students, and our next regular meeting is April thirteenth. All right, uh, we are adjourning to close session.
I don't know why I thought it was on the agenda, it's never on the, it's always on the inside.